Okay. Why don't we get rolling? Let's start the coordinator town council and board of sanitary district number two, subsidiary district to the town of Cordermadera, meeting Tuesday, September 18th, 2018. Call to order. First, we will do the salute to the flag before we do the roll call, right? That's what it says on here.
Yes.
You can please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, roll call.
Councilmember Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Mayor Ravazio.
Here.
Okay, we will start with open time for public comment. This is time for the public to speak about matters that are not on the agenda. Please, if you choose to speak, give your name and your address, and you have up to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak at open time? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to presentations. 3.1 Mobile Showers Pilot Program update with a presentation from Karen Strollio, project manager for Marin County Downtown Streets Team.
And Andrew, too.
And Andrew.
Yes.
Andrew.
I'm just gonna say hello, so I think you all know me. I'm Andrew Henning, the director of homeless planning with the city of San Rafael. Karen is gonna give the presentation tonight. She's been doing a phenomenal job with the Marin mobile care program, and so, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks. Hello, council members. How are all of you?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for having me this evening, so I can share with you all of our awesome updates, successes, and... So, as you may or may not remember, we launched our mobile showers at the beginning of March, and we hit the showerhead pouring, the pavement running. First, I wanted to kind of go through and hit on some of the successes that we've seen since we've been out there. We've served quite a few folks. I'll get to numbers in a few minutes, but these are just a few of the opportunities we've had to witness. We had a guest come in, and he brought one of his neighbors in his car and said, "Hey, this guy really needs a shower." We get him in the shower and start peeling the layers of wet clothing off of his body, only to realize that some of his skin is missing, because he's been sitting in his wet clothes for so long. We get him bathed, we get him redressed with donated clothing, and his neighbor takes him back in his car and drives him over to Marin's, uh, Marin General, where he was admitted because he had horrible diseases on the outside and the inside of his body. The doctor said if we hadn't have gotten him there, then he would've passed away. He was on his last, on his last limb. The hospital was successful in reuniting him with his family, who they located in Mississippi. His sisters flew out, and the story kind of goes from there. We have somebody who regularly uses the shower, struggles with diabetes, had a huge gaping wound in his leg that would not heal. He was staying outside. While he was seeing his physician regularly, he wasn't unable to actually get his wound to close, until he started using our showers Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at our HUD parcel site in Novato. That wound is finally closing after years of it being open, and his health is recovering. His diabetes is getting better. He's, needless to say, elated. We've seen six, seven people, as of yesterday, get into employment on their own accord, because they've got this dignity again, right? Housing, as we all know, the mobile showers is a part of the coordinated entry system, so when people come and visit our showers, they are taking surveys that are getting them into that coordinated entry that the county is hosting. As of this Monday, I believe, maybe it was Friday, I lose track of time, we had one of our shower guests actually get into housing. She moved in with her roommate and is elated. We've got someone else who's connecting with a housing provider through that coordinated entry program on Friday for housing, so that's exciting. We're seeing movement there. We've got some phenomenal funding partners. We're doing a jump shot there with the Bank of America. We've been in the Marin IJ quite a few times, but the biggest success that outshines all of these is the amount of dignity that people are actually finding in themselves. We had one of our very first shower guests open the door in the middle of her shower, which was a sight to see, and said, "I feel beautiful. I know I don't look it, but I feel beautiful right now," which brought me to tears. And then, of course, somebody came out and said, "I can actually go get a cup of coffee and not have everyone stare at me, because I don't smell good." So, those are just a few examples of some of the anecdotal successes we've seen. We'll get to the numbers in just a few minutes. Challenges, of course, with every new pilot, we will face challenges. We did have a guest conflict. It was a verbal altercation, and we mediated, our shower staff there, you could see the guys on the bottom, they mediated that conflict, and since then, these two have become incredible allies outside. They share a tent community, they check in with us regularly, they're seeking services together. It's been incredible to watch that incredibly hostile historical relationship evolve into something that's actually supportive, and it's, it happened at the showers. Another huge challenge that we see on a regular basis is trust building. When someone's been outside for months and months and months on end, and they feel as though they've been burned by service providers in the community, whether that's true or not, it's a very, you know, internal perspective. It takes a minute for them to want to engage with our team. We've got people who will engage immediately, and we've got people who will, it takes 30 days for them to engage, or 30 visits for them to engage. But the point is, is that they are engaging, and they're still coming back, and they're connecting with us, and they're using showers, and when I stop by, they're like, "Hey, Karen," and I'm like, "Hey, Joe." So, there's definitely a relationship building that's happening. The challenge is the time. The other challenge is securing additional sites, which is part of the reason why we're here this evening. What I'm showing you here at the top is our monthly impact report. This is just a snippet. This is one example. There are several sites now, and I'll go over those in a little bit, but that is essentially the snapshot that you'll get each month. It's shower capacity for each site, it's how many people are being hosted, it's how many people can be hosted. You'll see, as of the end of August, we had served 758 showers. By the end of this month, we'll have served over 1,000, I think 1,100. We're really excited to cross that threshold. Again, this is linking folks to coordinated entry through that vulnerability index survey, so people are really trusting us with pretty personal information and trusting that the system is working. It is working. It's been incredible to watch their faces light up when we come to them with good news of, "There's a housing opportunity, what do you think?" We're also able to connect them with resources. A lot of folks historically have been outside for a minute, they tried Ritter back in the day, didn't work for them then, and we're like, "No, this is how you go about it, let us connect you, here's our case manager who can help take you there." So, it's really allowing our trust to fold over into the, our other service partners that we've got in the community. Like I mentioned, we've got seven folks that are guests who have secured employment, we've got some folks housed, and of course, this is all outside of Downtown Streets Team, our volunteer employment opportunity platform, so it's pretty exciting to watch those numbers climb. Expansion, of course, is something I mentioned we're working on. When we first launched our program, we had shifts in the morning in San Rafael and in Novato. Both sites have been so excited about the progress that we've made. We have since then secured PM sites, PM hours in the San Rafael site, which has actually been one of our largest hosting sites. We hosted 17 showers last night, which is pretty incredible. Novato, after our council meeting recently, has also showed interest in having some evening hours there as well. Next week, I'll be going over to Sausalito. They've already vetted some sites. We're gonna go and talk to them about what that looks like and how we can get them onto the schedule, so we can start hosting in their community. And then, I'll be in Fairfax in October, which I'm really excited about. Moving forward, so, as you can see, our goal here is really to have additional pilot sites secured by the end of December. What does that look like? Well, we met with Todd not that long ago, it feels like it was yesterday, but maybe it was last year. Time flies by when you're having fun. Some potential sites that were suggested, the Marsh behind Trader Joe's, an area up in the hills behind the library and across from, I wrote the sheriff's, but it's actually the highway patrol office. So, going through there and looking at those to see which site is gonna work best for us, the Marsh would work. It would take us bringing a generator which, with us, which is a level of just involvement. It's best if we could have a three-prong plug and a garden hose, but we thought that behind the library would be the best fit. But again, I want to bring this back to you guys and ask you for feedback on site locations that you feel would be best for showers here. What we did in, with the Novato community is, we kind of went back and forth to really fill out what was gonna work best for them. Some of the sites we proposed, there were reasons behind why those weren't gonna work, and that was okay. We went back, back and forth until something worked. Eventually, we would love to secure a site that we could at least pilot by October. Yeah, and that's essentially it in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna open it up to questions from the council first, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody has?
I do. Do you mind?
Yes, please.
Just a couple of quick questions?
Yeah.
So, can you, by the way, it's excellent and honorable work, and we're grateful to you for the service.
Thank you.
It's a single unit with three showers in it, is that right?
Yes, we have two of them, though.
You have two units, so six showers total?
Yes, and two of those, two of those three that you see there is a California ADA compliant. So, what does that mean? It means we can host someone with a physical disability. It also means we can host families. There's no place in Marin right now that will offer showers to families with kids under 18.
And you said you had 17 last night. Was that in one unit or both units put together?
That was the one unit.
And so, what would be a normal evening? How many people, how many guests would you help?
That has been the most so far, was the 17 in San Rafael.
How many, how many would a normal evening be?
Um, we could host, it depends on the amount of time that we can be at each site, but we could host between 22 and 27 showers per shift. Because of the water restrictions, we, and the waste tank that we hold, we can only dump the waste tank in certain areas, because it's black water, so we can only carry so much water, and the amount of time is what kind of ties to the, the water capacity.
Right, but I mean, if last night you had 17, and that was the most you've had?
Yes.
What would be a normal, a typical evening?
Uh, oh, I see what you're saying. Sorry, misunderstood. Um, I would say, I think it's about 14 is the average.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then, are you looking for commitment from the town in some financial way, or what, are you asking us to do something tonight?
I am asking for you guys, as far as commitment, no. We've received dollars through MCCMC, so we have operational funds through that fund. What we're, what I'm asking for your help with is actually vetting a site that we could host in this community.
Okay.
Would that be best done as an agenda item, I think, Todd?
Yes.
Yes. I would, what I would ask the council for consideration is to delegate that authority to me to work with them to pick a site. I don't really, the library is mentioned, I don't see the library as one that we would use, but I do think we have a couple of locations up on Casa Buena and Meadows Suite and the Marsh to coordinate with Larkspur as well, to support them with a generator, and that's what I would, I would go for. I will communicate that to the, to the council as an update, but I don't see this as an agenda item, if you don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
I think I can handle it.
Questions?
I was just going to ask, thank you again, and second, Sloan's commentary, I, you say behind the library, and it's a hill behind the library, I just don't know quite what that means, behind the library. If that's off the list, then you don't have to answer the question. And behind Trader Joe's is actually in Larkspur, isn't it?
That's correct, yeah.
And the other one would be across from the Chip's office, so on, on the high, on the Boulevard, San Clemente Drive. Is, are there any other sites that you're considering?
I think there's also, again, we need a generator, but it'd be at the top of, because it's a shared property with Caltrans, the county, Mill Valley, and Cordermadera, but it's at the top of Casa Buena and Meadows Suite. We have a contingent there as well, and a lot of times, people come down from the hillside and will congregate around the library, and so that's why, that's one area we were considering as well. So. Again, you're looking at any given point, people that come down off the hill into our community during the summertime, it's 7:00 to 15:00; during the wintertime, you're talking 5:00 to 7:00, that are seen, that come out, so. So, 14 is a nice number that we can actually get them, you know, the gateway, get them services, identify who they are, and help them, so.
And that's kind of the whole point. I'm the town's representative on the countywide homelessness committee. We've been working on this for three or four years. We got every town in Marin to donate to this and participate, and the whole objective is to engage homeless people. We have highly trained staff, and then when they engage with the staff, first off, there's dignity that's provided by cleaning up and getting clothes and, you know, getting cleaned up. But the other thing is, they get to interact with staff, and staff can help them get into housing, and we can help solve the problem, and we've actually had some success at doing that so far, so, which Andrew looks like he's gonna talk about, but that's the point of doing this. So, if we can get it going in Cordermadera, where we definitely have a homeless population, we may be able to help actually solve the problem.
Yeah, just to quickly add to that, so Karen mentioned the coordinated entry system, and I think I've presented on that here before, but the idea is that we're trying to go out and actually survey and assess people's level of need, so that the most vulnerable people are getting into our permanent supportive housing units. So, since October 1st of last year, we've housed over 50 people through that process, so it really is key, the more people that can go to the showers and get surveyed and assessed, the more people are gonna get housed and actually permanently out of those encampments.
Right, and this is a great story. You read about, you know, what are we gonna do about the homeless population? We're actually making progress, not huge progress, obviously, but, and that's one of the reasons we set this system up, is because the people actually have to create an appointment, they have to show up, so they have to have a level of responsibility to get there, and then they can work with staff, and hopefully, we can get them housing.
I think the other piece I would love to just bring to light is that a lot of the guests that we've had in Novato, in my experience of doing outreach, I really am going to encampments, I'm going to tents, I'm going to people who are staying outside, but we've noticed a huge collection of folks who are actually staying in their cars, who are not typically reaching services, are not going out to Ritter, they're not going to Vinnie's, they're not going to the soup kitchen, they are staying in their cars, they're working class people who cannot afford to live here. So, to be able to provide a shower for that population, that group of the population as well, is, is another piece that kind of flies under the radar.
Right, and one of the things I know we learned in one of the meetings is oftentimes, these people may be a security deposit away from housing, and that might be the kind of thing the county can help with, and then, because they actually have income, they just don't have what it takes to get into a real unit, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, I'm sorry, were there questions? Are there questions anywhere?
Not for me.
We will entertain any questions from the public, if there are any. I need you to come to the microphone. It's the only way we can do it, sorry, I need you to give your name.
The three forms of ID, sir.
That's right.
Freckesisa, 18 Granada Drive. In one of those pictures, it looks like there was a washer and dryer in there?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, I don't know if you, it seems like that was another piece of it, so there, people are able to wash their clothes there also, or no? No, okay.
I, I can.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay. Yes, we, we do have a washer and dryer. It's actually really exciting. That was a donation from one of our community members, and the purpose for that is to wash our towels. Oops. Something that we've been working with Ritter on is how to help offset the laundry need, right? One way we've been able to do it through the mobile showers is getting donations of underwear, undershirts, feminine, feminine items, bras, things like that, so at least, if nothing else, you have a layer until you can get to your next laundromat. But yeah, they're really pretty, but they're for our towels. I wish we could wash everyone's laundry there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Really appreciate you coming here tonight, and Todd, if we can make sure we make it, I know you've got so many priorities, but if we can figure out how to make this happen, so we can hope, start, start solving the problem here.
Mr. Mayor, is there any action that we need to take in order to make the delegation?
There's no action to take, I mean, because this isn't an action item, but I think we verbally talked about having Todd work with them to try to figure out a location, and he'll come back to the council and say this is what, and it'll probably be a consent calendar item, it sounds like, as to what the location would be, unless there was some issues that we needed to solve. Does that work, David?
Yes, yep.
I'll do all the action, don't worry. [laughter]
Thank you so much.
Awesome, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you so much. Nice to hear good news.
Started off well.
Uh, let's move on to the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together, which are routine or have been discussed previously, do not require further discussion. They may be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, staff, or public may request removal of an item for discussion. I was just handed a correction on one item, which is that the minutes of the age-friendly Cordermadera event should reflect that there were 22 honorees, not 14, at the age-friendly event, age 90 that showed up, which is great news. Is there anything else? Were we gonna pull a couple of these, or? No, we're going for the whole, okay. So, if no one is going to pull anything, then I will entertain a motion to approve items for 1.1 through 4.1.7.
I'll make the motion, but, but, Mr. Mayor, I need to abstain from item number 4.1.8 when we come to the voting, that's all. But I'll, I'll move that we approve all items, all eight items.
Oh, 4.1.8?
Yes, the minutes, I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a second.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes, as to 1 through 7, and abstain as to item 8.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes. Okay, there are no public hearings or sanitary district consent calendar items. Let's move on to business items. 6.1.1, consideration and possible action to approve Town Park Basketball Court Rehab Project, Mario Florentini. Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. As, as you all know, during the capital improvement project budget process, there was an allocation of $70,000 that was put towards basketball court rehabilitation project in Town Park, and this is largely in due, due to a real overwhelming support from the community. There was a real strong group of individuals who came forward to really, really talk about their experiences at the Cordermadera Town Park Basketball Court, and growing up, and learning to play ball, and really, really good stuff about how they were able to, to reach some younger kids and teach them how to play ball, and it was, it was a great story that they told, and it was really heartwarming that they were invested in trying to, trying to rehab these courts. So, with their assistance and putting together a proposal and plan, and looking at different options in different courts and different towns and cities, they came up with a, you know, real strong list of amenities that they'd like to see. They worked with the commission, they worked with staff, and it's just been a really, just great grassroots, you know, environment with them and working together, so I really wanna, I don't know if Sean's here, is he even, he is there? There he is. You know, Sean's done an amazing job putting a group together and really putting some information in front of staff to put this together, so I really appreciate his help, along with, with Peter from Public Works and Todd, of course, and our consultant, Dave Wilkinson. So, I want to just touch on a few things, just want to reiterate, this is, this is a rehabilitation project we're looking at. We did look at a few options in Town Park on some different locations of relocating the basketball courts. They all had their pros and cons. When it came down to it, staff and commission really fell on the, on the side of, of working with what we had, and, and it's helpful, because we have a existing basketball court with a good population, so we're looking at, if you look at the map that you have, I just, I presented this to, to Todd several months ago, and just kind of looking at different options on how we could, what we can do with the park over the next several years. Sorry, Rebecca, it's in there somewhere. Thank you. And it, it's really, we have, we have such a beautiful park, and we have so much acreage, that there's, there's a lot that we can do with it, and.
Yeah.
There are some, you know, options for, for different things, but looking at the, our central infrastructure, you know, we worked on the skate park, we just got the tennis courts done, and the basketball courts are certainly a focal point of our park right in the middle there. So, we decided to keep, recommend that we keep it in the location that it is at, and we are looking at several different amenities that, I've outlined in the staff report, that we're looking at phasing out, and we'll see if we get to all of them, but, but we are looking for just a support to move forward with Phase 1, which is squaring off the, the court itself, making it more of a regulation size, improving the hoops, improving the backboards, a real actual surface, not just a concrete surface, which would actually be more, mimic more of what you see on, on the tennis courts, with basketball lines. There's different options that we can look at in terms of, you know, hoop heights for kids, and different lines that we could use for different types of games, but the, the real core improvements would be enlarging that, that concrete area and putting a new surface on it, and having new standards and new backboards put in. And in that, that budget figure of $70,000, we're confident that we can complete that project in short order. There are different amenities that, that are in the report, you know, in terms of electricity and barbecue areas and viewing platforms, and different things that we could look at over a period of time, and I think that, as we have seen with the, with the tennis court improvements, we have had a resurgence of interest in our courts, and I think the same thing will happen with our basketball courts. There will be, we're looking at some programming options as well with, with the volunteer groups that come, have come out, and it'd be great to see, you know, real, we have a lot of, a lot of improvements that we've done at the parks, so this is kind of another, another piece of the equation, so appreciate any support and direction from council, and look forward to getting this done in short order. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so, do you have questions now?
If, if you have any, I'd be happy to, happy to answer.
Yes, are there any questions from the council?
I just have one question. Mario, you're asking for an approval for Phase 1, and then you'll come back at some, when Phase 1's done, for Phase 2 and Phase 3?
If, if, if staff feels inappropriate to move towards those steps, then we would look at that.
Okay, great. I just wondered what the sequence was.
Yeah. So, to be clear, you would like $70,000 for Phase 1 tonight, right?
Well, that's, that's what's budgeted already in the, in the capital project plan, but it would be to move forward with that, that Phase 1 of that project, yes.
So, we're just going ding, make it so, right? I just wanted to make the...
Or, no.
I'm not gonna say no to this one. I'm not gonna say no to this one. I, I first saw Sean appear in this room, I don't know, a year and a half ago, just saying, "What, how do we get this done?", and with some guidance and direction, he, he did a, I think, a very, very good example of how citizen involvement can win. Bless you. How grassroots effort can result in some positive change in town, and I think it's really cool.
So, just a reminder, this is the questions portion.
I'm...
Just for future reference.
Done with my questions. I'm done with my questions.
One quick question. Thank you, Director Florentini, for your presentation. Do you have any sense of the timeline for Phases 1 and then, or for Phase 1 and then potentially for Phases 2 and 3, should we eventually look at moving towards this?
Phase 1, working with the contractor that we have talked to, to put the budget together that we have, it does, does require good weather. So, we're, we are seeing if there's a possibility of putting that project together in place before the end of the calendar year. More than likely, it would be probably in the springtime, but we're, we're looking at that. Phase, Phase 2 and Phase 3 are a little more complicated. Phase 2 has a, has some earthworks involved, and there's definitely some consideration for the other multi-use aspect of the park itself, and Phase 3 is something that will take a lot more consideration and, and planning.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions, so we're gonna open it up to the public now. If you have questions or comments, now's the time to please ask staff about them. I would ask you limit your comments to three minutes, and if you could please open with your name and address. Is there anybody who'd like to talk about this? Please, I need you to come to the microphone. We need to make sure everybody can hear you, and the folks at home can, too. You're on TV.
Hello, everyone. My name's Sean McCormick.
I actually have a new address because I just bought a house today. So I just got, heard, heard that news right before I walked in here. But, so I live at 1739 North Star Drive in Petaluma now. But I'm a teacher over at Tamaskow High School here and then I grew up in the community, went to Neil Cummins Hall in Redwood. And yeah, I just want to thank everyone here, particularly Mario, for taking the project seriously. The Parks and Recreation Committee, Fred, for, you know, letting us come in there and speak about why we felt this basketball court was important. And yeah, that's just, I think it's going to make Marin a better place for basketball players. And it's just really exciting because growing up here, there wasn't a nice basketball court to play at outdoors. You had to either be a member of the Bay Club or the Tennis Club over on Darty. So it's really exciting and I think all my friends and then future generations are going to really appreciate that the town made this a priority. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak about this?
Members of the council, Mario, I love the idea.
Phyllis, I'm sorry, your name, please.
Oh, Phyllis Galanis, and I live in Cordera Madera. You said that you wanted to have, you were thinking anyway, of having a low hoop for kids and then a regulation one for everybody else. How, how would you accomplish that?
So just for clarification, the, there are currently four standards there that exist. And what we would be doing is actually adding as another pair. So we'd have six total hoops and a pair of those hoops that would be oriented east-west would be at a lower height, recommended height for, for youth.
Great.
Is what we're looking at doing.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then I'm going to close public comment and then we'll bring it back to the council for comments, discussion, and a possible motion.
I would just, I guess, if I may, Phase One, awesome. Phases Two and Three, I look forward to taking a closer look at if and when the time is appropriate.
Okay. Anybody else?
It's already budgeted for, it just seems non-controversial. Thank you, everybody, for doing the work. After David makes his comment, are you Bob, I'm willing to make a motion.
Okay, yeah, I think it looks great too. Fantastic job, you guys, thanks. David?
I apparently made my comment.
So Bob, do you have anything or no?
Uh, looking for a motion.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews. Mayor Vazio.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 6.1.2, Administrative Review, 159 Prince Royal Drive ADU, Administrative Review of the Ministerial Approval by Planning Staff of Application. PL 20180016 for detached ADU at 159 Prince Royal. So just a reminder for everybody here, in case you're wondering, this is a business item. This is not a Planning Commission Appeal, so it's going to be treated as a business item. Correct? Yes, thank you. So we're going to hear a report from staff. We will have questions from the town council. We will have public comment. Your comment will be three minutes, limited to three minutes, please. And then the council, we'll come back to the council when public comment is done and we will entertain a motion, possible motion and vote. Correct? Great, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Vazio, council members. That avoids me having to go over that piece of that, so that's helpful. I thought I'd take a little bit of time. This is a little bit of a different type of meeting than we typically have, or at least between the Planning Director and you. So I take a little bit of time setting up sort of what we're actually doing here tonight. And really, it's, this meeting is called an administrative review proceeding. And it's consistent with Section 1831.090 of our zoning ordinance, which relates to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance for the town of Cordera Madera. So tonight really is a review by the town council of the Planning Director's ministerial decision approving an accessory dwelling unit at 159 Prince Royal Drive. The administrative review proceeding, which I mentioned, 1831090 of the zoning ordinance, was adopted in 2016. That part of the code was adopted in 2016, which was part of a more comprehensive update to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance to comply with state legislation, which was adopted at that time. And really, it strengthened requirements, the state legislation and also our own code revisions requiring, sorry, requiring ministerial or non-discretionary review of accessory dwelling units and a process that is consistent with that sort of review by the planning staff. So this evening, we have, and just the reason why we are here this evening is pursuant to that section, neighbors of the proposed accessory dwelling unit have filed for an administrative review of the Planning Director's decision. Specifically, they have, are challenging the approval based on three different sections under the Section 1831050. That's subsections three, six, and seven of that portion of the zoning ordinance relating to zoning standards, privacy, and architectural compatibility. So the council's review this evening is limited really to applying the relevant law to the facts as presented. Again, it doesn't allow for any discretion or judgment in reaching a decision, again, consistent with the overall process for ministerial decisions related to accessory dwelling units. And as, as we've talked about ministerial decisions, that really involves the use of fixed standards or objective measurements. And that's, I'm happy to go over how planning staff came to its determination regarding those objective standards this evening. I've included a lot of information in the staff report that I think tries to explain how staff came to its decisions on those matters. The, but ultimately, the town council, we've included a couple of options in the staff report. The town council may uphold the decision of the, or agree with the decision of the Planning Director in determining that the Planning Director correctly applied the zoning ordinance in this particular case with respect to those three sections of the zoning ordinance that I referenced before. Or may exercise, or determine that the Planning Director improperly exercised his ministerial duties and made a legal error and remand the matter back to the Planning Director to perform ministerial duties consistent with the council's determination. So that was straight from the staff report there at the end of page five. And those are the options also listed on page five of the staff report for you tonight as well. I don't know if Randy would like to add anything at this time. Otherwise, I was going to go into a little bit of background before and answer any questions you may have.
Are you going to give a little background on items three, six, and seven?
Happy to do that. And yeah, I can do that.
I just think that might be helpful for everybody if you can just.
Sure.
Not a lot, obviously, but briefly about that, so we're all aware.
Absolutely.
To discuss, yeah, those items. That'd be great. I've, I've read the extensive report, I'm sure everybody else has too. But I don't know if everyone else in the audience has, so.
Absolutely, no, that's good, that'd be fun.
Thank you.
So 1831050, paragraph three, relates to zoning development standards. This, this requirement is that the ADU shall comply to all development standards, including the underlying, included in the underlying zoning district, including standards for lot coverage setbacks, height, and the like. And so staff reviewed the proposed accessory dwelling unit. In any case, we reviewed the proposed accessory dwelling unit, which is located sort of at the bottom of the slope of one, of the property outlined in, in yellow and highlighted in yellow here, facing fronting on Constitution Drive. And we reviewed that with respect to setbacks, height, floor area, lot coverage, all of the typical development standards that you have in the R1 zoning district. Number six reflects architectural compatibility. Accessory dwelling unit shall comply with following design standards. It talks about architectural style and building form should match the, shall match the style and form of the main building of the site. Architectural details, including but not limited to windows, roof pitch and trim, shall match the main building on the site. With respect to those aspects, the proposed accessory dwelling unit, sorry, I'll do this. This is showing the site plan of the, where the actual accessory dwelling unit would be located on the site. And then with respect to the actual physical form of it, this is a 3D image showing some of the wood and stucco materials and form that staff determined would match the proposed accessory dwelling unit, which, I'm sorry, proposed primary house located at the top of the hill. And so we had some discussion frankly about, in this particular case, given the primary dwelling unit on the site was in the middle of sort of an applica, it got approval for a remodel, a major remodel, which was the rendering I showed there. And how does, how do we determine this particular accessory dwelling unit match? Are we, are we talking about the existing house on the site or the proposed house on the site? And staff believed it was, we, you know, did our best. We realized we had to make a choice in this particular case to choose to match the proposed primary house that was approved for that particular property. However, we also tried to, well, we did put in a condition of approval in staff's approval letter of the ADU that says, at the time we go to final this ADU, if a building permit has not been pulled for the primary house on the site, we would have it match the existing, I'm sorry, the, the existing house on the site in terms of its colors and materials. So with respect to form, staff determined that this does meet both the existing and the proposed primary dwelling. But with, with respect to materials and colors, we included a clause to do the, to make it match the proposed, but if it didn't at the time this was built, we didn't have a sort of approval for a proposed ADU, I mean, for a proposed primary dwelling, it would match the existing house. So that takes care of C and D with relate to, to materials. E relates to lighting. So that just, lighting shall be shielded and directed, so it's not clear off-site. That's a requirement of this accessory dwelling unit. Privacy, windows shall be located to avoid line of sight to windows adjacent properties. Obscured glass or other techniques may be used to avoid line of sight. So staff looked at, at this actual location of the primary windows and the living, and, and made a couple of determinations related to this particular requirement. One is that the actual house is located about 85 feet away from, I'm sorry, the ADU is located about 85 feet away from one and five Constitution. And also that living area, the largest windows in the living area are also located sort of in between one and five Constitution, so that it was avoiding line of sight. And then there's also vegetation, significant vegetation to each of those houses that would avoid the direct line of sight across the street. I think also in, in looking at this particular privacy requirement, it talks about adjacent properties. Typically, across the street does not, is not an adjacent property, rather the adjacent properties for the purpose of privacy would be adjoining properties where a house has windows or other views looking into private areas of a house, into the backyard. So that was also another determination that we looked at and made. Views, this, this house at 12 to 13 feet in height, the ADU, and its location at the bottom of the hill would not impact views of the bay or Mount Tama Pius caused by the main building on the property as viewed from the main building on the adjacent property. And then similarly, sunlight was not affected, given the low scale and the limited other structures surrounding the building. And then landscaping talks about any tree over 30 inches in circumference, removed in conjunction with ADU must be replaced by 24-inch box tree within the yard from which it will be removed. And that also is proposed in this case. Seven relates to parking. Parking on the site shall conform to the requirements for accessory dwelling units. And so this really, where we looked at the parking requirements, this, this ADU did not require parking because it was located within .3 miles of a public transit. And that's what our, not only our ordinance says, but state law requires that that, no parking can be required where an ADU is located within .5 miles, half a mile of a public, of public transit. And also there are several other instances where parking cannot be required for an accessory dwelling unit. Those are three, three, six, and seven. All of this is outlined in the staff's, in a couple of places in the staff report, in staff's approval letter, which was issued on August 3rd, and also in correspondence to some of the neighbors who expressed concerns about several of these items in a memo on August 3rd as well, where we went into a little bit more detail on those items. So those are the specific items that are under review this evening. And we also have received correspondence from the homeowner. It's in your packet as well. There's correspondence from an attorney representing the neighbors who have filed for the administrative review and some other materials that are there to aid your review of staff's decision. Really, this is, I think staff is here to answer questions you may have or about our determination or my determination. And happy to do that at this time unless you have other questions for myself or Randy.
Randy, did you want to say something first?
I think Adam, I think adequately covered the nature of the proceeding, kind of the special nature of this proceeding and also the, how the process is to work. So I don't have anything to add unless you have questions.
I think, yeah, so we're going to open it up for questions from the council first. Adam, thank you for running through that because we are going to, we have a speaking time limit and I didn't want anyone who's here who wants to talk about this to be forced about some of the detail of the housing. So I thought it'd be good to have you cover that and not cut into somebody's time, so.
Sure.
So thank you for doing that. That was very helpful.
Okay, absolutely. If I may, just one piece of other information, just in terms of background. This is the second administrative review, review proceeding. So we did also have an administrative review proceeding in front of the Planning Commission on September 7th. And that resolution, which the Planning Commission determined that the staff did properly administer the relevant provisions of the code, is in your packet as well. One of the things that did come out of that meeting, just so you're aware, is that the Planning Commission did request that staff come back to the Planning Commission to review our ADU ordinance and think about some of the things that were raised during this process, things like public transit, things like, that we've all, we've, we've discussed in the past. Are there, are there other clarifications or corrections that we should, we should be thinking about and bringing back for consideration in the future?
Okay. So first, we're going to open it up to questions from the council.
I've got a quick question. Was the Planning Commission action unanimous?
It was not. It was three in favor and one not supporting.
And one absent.
One not, yes, and one recused, actually.
Can you show the other site plan again, please? Of the two? Is that a 25-foot setback to Constitution? Is that the backyard of this?
Sorry, that, so it's, it's actually the, I think the, we determined that was the backyard, correct?
The backyard of the main.
Yes.
And the point of entry there?
So the, so the actual setbacks, and also just to note about the setbacks, the setbacks are from the property line. And in fact, the sidewalks and the, and the setbacks to the street are actually an additional, they're, they're an additional several feet from the actual property line.
That's why you said 85 feet.
Yes, so they're, they're substantially more than the actual 25-foot setback requirement to get to the actual roadbed.
And, and I think this is the last question. Is the front door on Prince Royal Drive of the ADU?
Correct. So access will be from Prince Royal through a walkway over there. One of the reasons for that is that there's a no-access easement along Constitution Drive, which runs along the length of Constitution. That does not permit access across that portion of the properties, that front on Constitution. This was, goes back to the original subdivision map.
Is it 'cause of the, the steepness of the hillside, or?
Uh, you know, it's-
Or just, just an historical thing?
I think it's a historical thing, I think there was, uh, I think some suggestion that it, it shouldn't be actually, uh, any access to utilities or whatnot. Um, one, one idea, you know, in some, in some, it, it also effectively limits subdivision of some of those large lots into two lots, um, because if you limit it to split them essentially horizontally, you would not be able to access it from Constitution. So, um, I'm not sure if that was actually the thinking, but I think effectively when I look at it now, I say, well, that effectively limits the subdivision of those properties.
Thank you. Thank you. Eli?
No questions, that was very thorough. Thank you.
I have a couple, did I, and I can't find it right now, I'm sorry, this was a really thick and complex packet. Did I read in here that the public transit is actually a school transit bus? Or am I not remembering that?
It, it is a designated school route.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, I, I mean, this was, will likely come up anyway, so we might as well, uh, discuss the, the staff's thinking behind that. I mean, essentially, um, we did look into that, uh, whether or not that was a, you know, public transit from staff standpoint, and I think one of the things important where we, to think about in the context of this, uh, our own ordinance, but also the state law, which is what we are, basically took our language from, which the state law says within half a mile of public transit without any other clarification or, or guidance, um, says that's where parking is not allowed. So we looked at, is, is that a stop that is operated by a public transit agency, which it is, it's operated by Marin Transit? Is it open, um, can anybody use that bus, um, that stops there? Uh, and in calling Marin Transit and checking with them, they confirmed that that is the case. Does it have a, a fixed route, um, that makes stops, um, along that fixed route? And it does, um, and, and one of the, you know, hypothetically, somebody could take it and get off at the, um, right in front of town center to transfer on to, for example, a bus, um, at one oh one. And then fourth, um, does it have a, um, published schedule with regular times even? And, and so it checked all those boxes, I think that said we understand that it is seasonal in nature, it may not run all the time. Um, we also looked to, um, HCD guidance on that, which talks about, um, that with respect to public transit, um, isn't intended to have any sort of limitations such as minimum headways of fifteen minutes, whereas some other examples in legis- in the, in the government code, it talks about in order to qualify as public transit, there shall be a bus every fifteen minutes or something like that. That's not the case here, uh, so we've tried to really, um, wrap our heads around, and then in the context of the intent of the government code to reduce barriers, um, to, to allow for ADUs, uh, and remembering these are objective standards where really staff has to look at this as sort of a yes or a no question, it's meeting the minimum threshold of public transit, um, we said it did, so.
Okay. Thank you. And Randy, you're obviously consistent with that, I just wanted to-
Yeah, I think, uh, Adam's gone to law school since I last attended a council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council? Okay, then we're gonna open it up for public comment. If you could please give your name and where you live, that would be great. Uh, we are gonna be having a timer run, Rebecca will be in charge of that, you do have three minutes. Um, and if there's going to be a number of speakers, if you could kind of get ready and get in line behind the one going, that would really be helpful too, 'cause it'll help us keep the meeting moving along and get to a decision sooner for everyone. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, I am John Sharp, I'm the attorney mentioned by Adam, I represent the neighbors, and I'm gonna let them introduce themselves in the interest of time, 'cause I see that clock ticking. I will also ask that if I run a little bit over, you indulge me to allow me to finish my thoughts. Won't be long, I've been practicing, uh, and I will not belabor points that are in our correspondence that was in your packet. We have carefully reviewed government code six five eight five two point two, which is the engine that drives your ordinance eighteen point thirty-one point zero five zero and the related ordinances. There's no published authority in the courts regarding, uh, the meaning, some of the meanings of six five eight five two point two. I think your town attorney would agree with me on that, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think he would agree. So what we looked at is the legislative intent behind the statute. Legislative intent says notably with regard to this application, uh, accessory dwelling unit adopted by a local agency has a, uh, the effect, it's the intent of the legislature that, um, the, or the statute, uh, have the effect of providing for creation of ADUs, and that provisions relating to matters including size, parking, fees, and other requirements are not so arbitrary, excessive, or burdensome so as to unreasonably restrict the ability of homeowners to create ADUs. Unreasonably and the concept of reason are why we brought this matter before you. It is the position of the neighbors that the town has not abdicated, nor is it required to abdicate pursuant to six five eight five two point two, its rights and its, in fact, obligations to protect the health and safety of residents. You have several of them here this evening who you're gonna hear from. I've read the material that's in the staff report, I heard what Adam said this evening, and nowhere in there did I hear any reference to a couple of specific health and safety issues. One in particular is the area, uh, area of geotechnical safety and stability associated with this slope side proposal. You're gonna hear more about that from some of the residents, but I contend, and I believe the law supports, both your ordinance and I think the law, statute supports, that you are entitled to enforce and be satisfied that geotechnical stability and safety issues related to geotechnical stability are taken care of. I understand that the geotechnical support that you have for this project, which is not in your materials, uh, is a report from two thousand thirteen generated by Salem House, originally for the, really, that's three minutes?
Yes, please finish your sentence, we have other people who want to speak.
Sure. It is our belief that you're entitled to be satisfied that there is geotechnical stability on this site before you grant approval of a project, and if you do not do that, and geotechnical stability is supposedly picked up in the permitting or inspection process, you will have an issue on your hands whereby the applicant will say, well, you approved my project, how can you red-tag me now because my project is stressing the hillside?
Okay.
We ask that you consider that, and you consider the other issues that will be identified in a few minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sharp, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you want to introduce, you want to talk about the geotech issue right now, since it's kind of a-
Sure.
Can I do that? Right? Rebecca, you're the, no, ask the attorney, sorry.
It's up to the council, I think, but, um, I think other people are gonna be, be making additional points about that, so it actually may be better to wait until you get all of the different views on that before you talk about it.
Great. Let's continue with the public, please. Again, your name and, uh, where you live, that'd be great, thank you so much.
I just want to be really brief, 'cause I need to get my son home, he's back there. Uh, my name is Valerie Chu, and I live in Corder Madera on Constitution Drive. I don't know if I need to, um, I, I wasn't prepared to speak, and the only thing that really inspired me was coming here tonight, I experienced the problem that I initially wrote to Mr. Wolf about, which is, the, what you can't see here is that Prince Royal is very steep at that point, and where Constitution abuts that, you're like, when you're driving out of Constitution, you're craning your head trying to look up the street that is blocked, or, you know, if there's cars parked there especially. It, it's hard for you to imagine it without seeing it, but it's very hard to see cars coming down the street, and they come down very rapidly, and tonight I had a close call, just like that, because I'm, I'm inching out trying to see, and there's no cars even parked there, and with the ADU not having any, uh, parking, there will be cars living there for sure, and I'm not sure how I'm going to safely get out of that intersection, because it also gets much narrower on Constitution, which is, I think, another reason that they had the law with regards to no more like, uh, I don't know what you called it, but no more driveways on there, because it's narrow too. So, um, when you have cars parked on both sides of the street, which doesn't, isn't extremely common, 'cause there's no sidewalk, I'm rambling, I'm sorry, but I'm just trying to say that traffic safety is a real issue there, and per the law, I believe traffic safety needs to be considered, and, uh, the parking is married to that, just inherently. And, um, I, I really don't think the public transit that was discussed meets the criteria that would, um, that somebody would be able to live there and get to work and use public transit, which would be the whole reason that the parking is associated with public transit. They would think that you could live there and not need a car, 'cause you could get to work on public transit, but I don't think that's the way it, it really is there. But anyway, um, I hope I was kind of clear, I wasn't prepared to talk, but I really think traffic safety needs to be considered at that intersection, thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's next?
I'm getting there. Phyllis Galanis, um, I live at two fifteen Prince Royal Drive. I'm taking issue with the planning director's, um, evaluation of what they mean, what the state means by public transit, um, and also about the driveway and the parking. The, the driveway is supposed to be in the front yard, um, there's supposed to be a required front yard, you can't have a driveway in the front yard of this ADU, they can't, I'm gonna stop for a minute, I hope you all will go and see what we're talking about. I know you live, you know where I'm talking about, but the others of you may not know exactly what we're talking about, and it's not a typical yard for an ADU. The next thing they're saying here about state ADU standards for, um, fixed, for transit, public transit, along a fixed route with a fixed schedule. Marin Transit considers the two routes that run down Paradise Drive to be supplemental, they're not fixed. They only run when school is in session, and some of them, um, only run at certain times and don't even stop at anywhere close to Prince Royal and Paradise during many of the morning hours. I have a copy for you, I'll be happy to give you this. Also, on, um, that it stops in the morning, the one that, um, takes, that goes to Redwood, stops at Prince Royal and Paradise at seven twenty-four in the morning, period. Coming back, you could have it, it'll, well, it would stop at one fifty-two, two thirty-two, two fifty-two, three twenty-seven. You have a lot of choices coming back, you have one in the morning. That, and it only runs when school is in session. It isn't fixed because school holidays change, um, school, um, times letting out during the year are always subject to change. It runs, what, a hundred and eighty, eighty day, uh, days a year, it doesn't run for a hundred and eighty-five. That is not a fixed schedule, a fixed time that anyone who is not a school student can rely on. If a person doesn't have a car in our area, the other places that it stops, not this, the, um, one, Route one seventeen, are down by San Clemente or up by Harbor on Paradise. Those are not within the point, the, the one half mile, so I have a big issue on that. We already know, 'cause I've talked about it before, how wrong I think it would be to try and put a building down on that part of the hillside when we've all been told, oh, our lots go all the way down there, we can't build on that part of the, of the hillside. The developer had a reason for having that access denied, for the stability of the hillside, and if you will look in that area, you will see houses are not built on two sides of the street-
Phyllis, I'm gonna ask you to finish up, please.
-from Constitution and on up.
Thank you.
So again, I don't think that the, all the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed.
Sorry, Bob, thank you. Good evening, um, my name is Kelly Cromhout, and I am a longtime resident of San Rafael. While I didn't grow up in Corder Madera, my aunt and uncle and cousins live on Willow Avenue, I practically grew up there. I'm here as, from Next Gen Marin, we are a housing advocacy group, and I understand and respect the concerned neighbors of the area, um, but I do also want to say that I hope that you guys will consider, you know, restoring the planning director's ministerial approval. I think that it's really important that we do build ADUs, we need, I'm no geotechnical expert, so I can't speak to that, but, um, I did read all of the handouts and the emails and all that, all the attachments before I came here today, um, and really, ADUs are going to be the way to build housing. In Marin, it's about eighty percent open space, and, you know, it's important that we do not violate and, you know, Marin's character and integrity, we want to keep it beautiful, but even if we do help one college student out or one person that's in the workforce, that will help our commute times, you know, there will be less cars on the road, and the, um, the stop at Paradise and Prince Royal Drive for the, um, Marin Transit Route, it's number one seventeen, that actually links up to Paradise Drive and the US one oh one overpass, so people can get off at the overpass, they can go underneath to where many buses stop there, and that's a great way to be able for people to travel to transit. So it's not direct, and it may not be three sixty-five a year, but it is an option, and there's, I think it's well-known that we do need kind of an overhaul of Golden Gate Transit in Marin County, which is not here tonight, um, but I really do implore you to look at the decision that was already made. I don't think that it would have been approved in the first place if there wasn't a lot of thought that went into this, and, you know, I understand that people don't want an ADU, you know, but really, something needs to be done, and it didn't seem like there was that many parking problems regarding the safety, maybe put a stop sign there, then people would have to stop, and you wouldn't be craning your neck and things like that. So these are all things I urge you to consider, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hi, uh, thanks for your time tonight.
Can I just ask, are there a lot more people that want to speak? If you can, if you can kind of get over here behind this person, we'd just like to kind of keep things moving, people have children, want to get home, I want to get this done as quickly as we, want to make sure we move as efficiently as possible. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Paul Tokars, and I live at one sixty-four Prince Royal with my wife and three kids. Our house is directly across the street from where this proposed three-bedroom second house would be planned and built, and built without any parking. And the lack of parking is what I want to focus on, some of my neighbors have stolen a bit of my thunder, but, um, I do have a couple extra points. Uh, the, the reason I want to focus on this is, as has been discussed, parking implicates potentially traffic flow and public safety issues, and it definitely does in our context, given the narrowness of Constitution and the steep, uh, blind curve on Prince Royal. With a three-bedroom house, it's not unreasonable to assume there's gonna be at least two or three cars parked there constantly, you know, in addition to whatever visitors they have. The staff's position, however, is that parking's not necessary 'cause of this, um, quote-unquote, "public transportation," um, but again, to call that "public transportation," I think is a stretch. Um, as, as been discussed, it's solely for, uh, for school purposes, limited schedule, uh, during the day, limited schedule during the year, um, you know, just the fact that the school system happened to contract with a public transit agency, I don't think makes it "public transportation." And, and, you know, this, this idea that because the term's not defined in this context, in this law, that as, as Adam, I think, kind of touched on, and as, uh, I think the, the town attorney mentioned last week, it's, you don't look, you know, the absence of a definition doesn't mean that you interpret it broadly. Usually, and, and I'm an attorney myself, when you have a term that's not defined, you use the plain meaning rule, which means, what is an ordinary- the plain meaning rule, which means, what does an ordinary reasonable person think it means? An ordinary reasonable person isn't going to look at that public trans, you know, that school bus line and think it's public transportation, especially in the context of what we're talking about. The whole reason for that exception to the parking requirement is that, you know, it seems obvious that it's to replace the need to have a car. Nobody'd be able to rely on this public transportation, you know, certainly throughout the year, in a way that would obviate the need for a car. Another, another point that wasn't raised, but was raised in front of the planning commission by staff was, well, even if we take for granted that it's not public transportation, the homeowner can just draw a box on their driveway and designate that as parking. If you go to the site, you know that that's not reasonable. I mean, the renter will never park there. They don't want to, they're not going to want to park in their landlord's driveway. The homeowner's not going to want them blocking their driveway, blocking their garage, let alone, you know, the renter wanting to, you know, walk up and down, you know, the steep hill just to get to their car. It's just not, you know, plausible. So even if they amended it to have such a rectangle on their property, you know, that would not prevent cars from parking, as we've been discussing, and there'd be no way for us to fight it. I mean, it just, we'd be stuck with it, so.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Yasi Gosponudich, and my family has resided at One Constitution Drive for over 20 years. I'm gonna start out by reading a letter from a whistle-stop bus driver to the town council of Corte Madera. I am a bus driver for Whistlestop Bus Transportation Services in Marin County. One of my passengers is a special needs individual that resides at One Constitution in Corte Madera. Five days a week, I pick him up in the mornings and take him to his day program in Nevada, return him in the afternoons. I've been notified there may be a home that will be built directly in front of One Constitution on the steep hillside next to Prince Royal. I'm very concerned about the already narrow street and it being even harder to drive through with additional cars on Constitution. It's already a challenge for my ADA compliant bus to drive through and park on this street for pickups and drop-offs, and it would be even more unsafe to have increased cars there. Please consider the ADA implications of allowing a house without a garage and therefore more cars on this already narrow street, and how it could impact that those neighbors who are elderly and disabled and rely on whistle-stop bus transportation to safely make their daily commutes and necessary outings. Thank you, Eddie Emerson. I can leave this with the staff. Also, I just wanted to note that last time at the administrative review, there was a couple times that it was said that Constitution is very similar to Privateer Drive, which is very close by. My uncle lives on Privateer, so I'm very familiar with the street. Currently, that street looks very much like congested with the cars are now day-to-day. That street has had houses on both sides since its origination in the 60s, and it would be very, very hard for an ADA compliant bus to go down that street to pick up someone like my brother or my grandma that's picked up by whistle-stop numerous times a week as well. So that was, the choices were made in the 60s because there was no ADA laws, right? Those were, those came into effect in the 1990s. We're currently in 2018, and we know that these are needs of our neighborhoods and the needs of our community, to be able to have folks that cannot make it to a bus stop, which we don't actually have a bus stop near us. It's a bus, if you came, if you came and saw, it says "school bus stop" right there. It doesn't say "public transportation." But if we did, they're not able to make it to these bus stops. They need to have this access. So that's just one point I want to make, that we have the option now, which we, to make a choice, to make it a accessible place for our current neighbors. And then I just also wanted to note that there was a few times that even though this was not supposed to be discretionary, choices were made by the planning commission, both in deciding if the character fit and also what is public transportation or not. And, and, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Tamila Faricu, and my family are residents of 163 Prince Royal Drive. The adjacent building as 159 is located. For the purpose of soil stability and preserving the hillside of, for the critical safety issue of this disturbed land, an up-to-date geotech report of slope static seismic stability analysis and the soil test in so many areas, including under the existing house, is in various locations, is needed before building review. Because they are investing on, spending so much on, you know, go-forward for building permit, why don't they do all this before then? This land, based on the Corte Madera debris map, is debris. And this 159 remodeling plan is already approved for planning, for planning, and is already violating the rule, the code, because the retaining wall is already dropped out of the setback and coming toward my railing foundation, and the house is in jeopardy. Our safety is in jeopardy. And for this purpose, everything has to be reviewed before anything goes wrong. And the survey drawing is not consistent with any of Town of Corte Madera maps like plot, plan, topography plan, and accessory plan. As a result, the 2012 survey map not accurate, and it's need to be redone by a licensed surveyor. The Town of Corte Madera is responsible for the accuracy of land use and not making 163 property, sacrifice the land lost. 159 ADU will be built approximately 21 foot 6 inches above Constitution Drive, because is, you see in a plan, because it's flat. But in reality, if you check the height, which is not showing in any elevation regarding the relationship with Constitution and Prince Royal Drive, it is going to be built eight feet to 12 feet above the grade, and it has 13 feet and above its building itself, because they are in a different height. This already blocking 168 view.
Thank you very much.
But without a story post, you can't tell.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Jan Kaiser. I live at 172 Prince Royal Drive, which is directly across the street from the existing house at 159 Prince Royal Drive. And the ADU is slightly down the hill from where we live. What I'd like to discuss with you, or talk to you about, is the instability of Ring Mountain, of which the Mariner Highlands sub-development is part of. When the town in 1961 decided to allow for the development of the hillside, which is on Ring Mountain, they planned it all out. There may or may not have been a geological study, but they sculpted the hill. They took quite a long time to bulldoze the areas and cut in the streets and cut in placements for each and every house that they put in. The house at 159 Prince Royal Drive was a scrap of property that didn't fit the development of Prince Royal Drive. My house across the street was also cut in as an extra house. It doesn't really fit. And, but let me go through the rest of the, what I have to say about the geology. Ring Mountain is a mulage. It's a mixture, a jumbled mixture of different types of rock. And people come from all over the world to notice, or to visit this jumble of rock. You walk up on Ring Mountain, you go to Turtle Rock, you go to Split Rock, and you're going to see different types of rock. None are stable as you would like to have. It's not granite. It's not, it's not all sandstone. It's not all serpentine. However, the ADU had a survey done some years ago by a reputable geotechnical organization that's been referred to, and that refers to a bedrock that varies between five inches below the surface at the toe of the hill to six feet under the dirt that's on top. There are two layers of dirt. There's the sidecast or caluvium that was pushed off the side of the hill by a bulldozer. There is also a layer of clay. There is no, no knowledge of the hillside above the ADU, or proposed ADU. That is dangerous, because that's the sort of thing that should have been taken care of before any permits or any approval were done, because of the steepness of the hill, the discontinuity of the soils. And I think that the planning department made a mistake in judgment to allow for the ADU to go in and for the remodeling of the primary structure without a detailed engineering report as to those soils. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Ben Shapiro. I am here with Next Gen Marin. I'm just going to put this really simply. ADUs are the simple solution to the housing crisis that we're dealing with currently in the surrounding communities such as Nevada, San Rafael, and Corte Madera as well. And these have such a small impact on the surrounding environment, but it helps such a variety of people. We've also found that it also has a very positive impact on the economy around us, so, just a thought.
Thank you. Anybody else? Again, if you're planning to speak, if you can get over here and get in line, that would really be helpful, we can keep things moving. Thank you.
My name is Margaret Bandell. I live at 180 Prince Royal Drive. I know a few of you have been at my home when the applicant for this made an application to improve his original site, or his original building. That building was going to add 1,516 square feet to his already existing home. This ADU will add 1,195. So what's being added to that site is 2,711 square feet. And in addressing architectural compatibility, that site, with all that square feet of living in addition to what's already there, will be an affront to the idea that that site is compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. That site is not compatible, and to say that the architectural design that's being proposed is subjective, or an objective opinion is not. It was an arbitrary decision and a bad one.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then we're going to close public comment on this, and we're going to bring it back to the council for questions, discussion, and a possible motion. I can see Sloan, you want to say something, but I was going to suggest, would it be helpful if we started with questions from staff, for staff again first?
I was going to ask if I could ask staff a question.
Yeah, why don't we start with our questions, because I think that'll help inform. I'm sure we all have several. Go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
Our excellent town attorney, I'm hoping, can clarify in a straightforward way the scope of our review.
So, given the fact that the state law requires that the decision be a ministerial one based on objective criteria, which the planning staff has gone through, my view is that the legal standard of review that you would use in this administrative review process would be whether or not the staff's reading of the requirements in the ordinance was legally erroneous. So in other words, you know, we've talked about the parking issue, whether there's some other legal construction that the, that the staff has given to the requirements that have to be satisfied that is legally erroneous. And I think that's kind of the beginning and the end of the ability of the council to review this. And it's not a hearing. The state statute actually bars any type of discretionary review, and that's why this is an administrative review, not subject to your normal rules. And absent some type of legal determination by the council that a legal error has been made by the staff, then I think approval is required, and absent that.
Can I ask you a question?
It does, but I'm going to need to ask Adam, but I don't mean to monopolize him.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So I have, I understand some of this, Adam, but could you explain to me about the parking deal? Like, there's, there's no requirement under the ADU ordinance here that there be any spot on the property, but, and because it's near to a public transit, there doesn't need to be any, you don't need to provide for parking at all, is that the deal?
Correct. Yeah, and I can elaborate on that if needed, but yes.
And then the last, so I get that now. And then the last one is, and I think you were going to before, and then we probably cut you off, but could you just speak briefly to what analysis or what you considered, what your reading of the requirements was with respect to the land, the condition of the hillside? In other words, was there an, I saw that, it's unclear to me whether we can even consider this, but I wouldn't mind your comments about, do we think that there's going to be a landslide?
Sure. Well, all right. I think in, with respect, this requires going in a little bit of the history of our reviews, so with respect to administering the code, there's nothing in the code that talks about any of our objective standards in determining whether or not we approve or deny this application, talk about stability, slope stability, and whatnot. So that's not in the planning entitlement process. However, this quickly became apparent that this was a concern of neighbors. When we put out a notice, courtesy, what we call the courtesy notice, saying that there is going to be an ADU, that an application has been filed, it's proposed, we have to, we're going to make a decision, this quickly, it became apparent to us, so that was a concern. So we did ask the applicant if, and this is separate and apart, again, from this, strictly from the procedure we're required to follow, but we did ask whether or not any information could be provided regarding geotechnical reports, slope stability, because that's going to be required in any case when we get to building permits. And that's typically when we get into the details of structure, slope stability, geotechnical engineering, how is this thing actually going to be anchored to the ground, and what do you do in terms of retaining walls and whatnot to ensure that the slopes remain stable and so on. So we did request that, we did receive something from the applicant. I quickly handed it over to the experts over here in Public Works, Peter and Jared, and they've, you know, as I responded in my memo to neighbors, we had that, we provided that report as well to neighbors, made that available to them, and noted that it is, will be under review by Public Works, they will scrutinize that, and that will be, we won't allow something to be built unless it's going to be safe, and we're confident of that.
Thank you, Adam.
Great.
Those are my questions. Do you want to go for it? What's the size of the lot, 159?
Yes, that's a hard one. All right, let me get, let me get the actual plans out in front of me.
While you're looking at that.
It's 15,246 square feet.
So in Corte Madera, it's a big lot, right? Okay.
Correct.
And, and yet, most of it is on the slope, so it's not a useful big lot. One of the findings that you need to make for an ADU is that it can have a sound foundation, right? That is noted in the, that is one of the findings that I think you've already made. And obviously, there's not going to be a, any aggregation of rights.
And obviously, there's not going to be a, any abrogation of rights to review the structural integrity of the upper property and the lower property, right?
Correct.
What's the width of Constitution Drive, and is it non-standard compared to any other subdivision road?
I don't know if I have that up on my head, but I'll look.
On the map, on the map, it looks as though it's the same width as Enterprise and Upper Prince Royal and Windward, and maybe it's a little wider than Grenada Park.
Well, and just real quickly, I did want to make reference. I think somebody, one of the commenters noted that I was making a comparison to, I think it was Privateer, but I was actually referencing Enterprise, which is the street directly to the north of Constitution, which has houses on both sides. But in any case, sorry, go ahead.
I just, issues and questions have been raised about the narrowness of Constitution, and I, it looks wider than the street that I live on, and I'm wondering if it is unusually narrow compared to other subdivision streets.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt, it's, as you know, for a small town, we have a fairly diverse road system, so there are some areas that are 60 feet wide and built to 60 feet. We have a lot of recorded maps that are 60 feet wide and that are only built to 40 feet, in which case the town still owes right away on 10 feet of either side of the roadway. The Constitution is not an abnormally narrow street, certainly not compared to other neighbor, hillside neighborhoods in town. From a purely public safety standpoint, there are no safety issues, in the Public Works Department's opinion, with adding an ADU as relates to the traffic circulation, other than existing conditions. I do believe that there is opportunity to improve with or without the addition of the ADU, some of the sightlines through some red curbing, we call it day lighting, which prevents cars from parking near the corners, and as you come out, you have a better sightline for pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles. And that's something the Public Works Department will be working on at this location, as I said, regardless of the ADU.
Say that again, Peter? The bit about, so you can...
I've been doing it already, Councilmember Bailey, since I came on staff. We've added red curb at probably a dozen locations, and we typically do that at the corners and at the edges of driveways, so that when you're coming up to an intersection or you're exiting a parking lot, for example, we did it at the library, you'll notice fresh red paint out there. You want to be able to really come forward, make sure that you can see in both directions for all road users and proceed. And I've looked at some areas in this neighborhood, and I think there will be some sightline improvements that we'll be implementing.
Thank you. There were questions, and I, forgive me if I'm mispronouncing a name, but Tomila at 163 Prince Royal raised questions about safety being in jeopardy and survey issues and problems, and, and maybe setback from other retaining wall. Have you resolved those issues? Are you taking care of those issues?
They, they will be taken care of, and again, a lot of the, I'm not specifically aware of the specific concern, but we're happy to look at any specific concern that may be addressed. There is a retaining wall next to the primary house that abuts the property of Tomila and her husband, and that, that we are aware of, and we'll definitely be looking at that as they go forward with their proposed building permits for the primary house at that site. Again, the only stage, we were, we are planning entitlements for the remodel of that primary house, and then we have this application sort of coming in mid-process. So absolutely, we'll be looking at all of that from a structural integrity, from the same way we would look at, we were talking about requirements for retaining walls and slopes, those sorts of things will be looked at.
Thank you. David, anything else?
I sympathize with the difficulty of providing consistent surveys on steep hillsides. I live on Christmas Tree Hill, and no two survey professionals agree when you're trying to get an acre or a quarter an acre out of that. So I, I sympathize.
Thank you. Eli?
My only question's already been answered. I was just going to ask for confirmation that any public safety concerns, specifically geotechnical matters, will be addressed duly as part of the process, not now, but further on in the process, and you've already confirmed that twice, so thank you.
And that was going to be one of my questions, too. It's nice confirmed it three times. I had a question specifically about, and I know we're only allowed to question whether or not this was legally erroneous, so bear with me, but if the school bus was found not to be public transportation, would they have been required to put a public parking space in near the unit, or would it be in the driveway?
Yeah, so the requirement, if you do, so, and I'll say, just in context, state law recently changed last year as well to say a maximum of one space, regardless of the number of bedrooms you have in an ADU, can be, can be required for an ADU. So one space, let's say absent this determination on public transit, would be required, and state law also says that that can really be anywhere in any configuration on the site. It can be tandem, it can be in the, in, I can read it directly, but, but tandem, so to answer your question, the, the space could be located on the driveway of the primary house in 14, 159 Prince Royal, regardless of whether the person would use it there. I understand sort of the, sort of the practical assumptions and some of the comments that were made, but that's strictly what it says. It could be in any configuration on the site. I think, and I think you've been going further. I'll keep, I mean, that answers the question, but there are some more other provisions. Really, I think the state law, you know, it started off in 2016, and then it continues to sort of try to get at this parking issue as an obstacle for developing accessory dwelling units, and it's, and so that's what's happening, and so you keep seeing additional sort of bills coming out each year that are trying to get at removing that parking requirement, you know, to allow, to remove these barriers and hurdles to developing these, these accessory dwelling units.
Okay, thank you. Randy? So this is the first time, this ADU law is relatively new for us, this is the first time it's actually been contested. How much room do we have in the future if we wanted to change our law relative to the state law? Because the state law is very constricting, I think, in what we're allowed and what we're not allowed, but is there any...
Yeah, so there are certain things you can do in the ordinance that you can't necessarily do on an ad hoc basis, and you got a particular application before you. So I know public safety understandably has been a big issue discussed tonight. One thing you can do in the ordinance is designate areas of the town where it might be unsafe to allow ADUs. For example, Christmas Tree Hill is, parts of Christmas Tree Hill are called out in the ordinance as not being an area where ADUs are allowed. So there are certain changes that can be made. I know the Planning Commission is looking at, or wants staff to come back with this issue, and that we can certainly come back before the council with what your options are to, to make some of these, to make changes that are permissible under the state law.
Okay.
That's one example.
Great, thank you. Okay, then now for discussion with the council. Anybody want to comment? Anybody want to start on this? Mr. Bailey?
I can go if you want.
And again, what we are doing, all we are doing, is determining whether or not the planning director acting as owning administrator properly exercises ministerial duties pursuant to the applicable provisions of CMMC Section 18.3, et cetera, et cetera, and California Government Code, correct? Did I get that right?
Yes, and whether or not he made a legal error when he...
I wrote down legally erroneous.
That's one way to look at it. Legal error, yeah.
But that's what we are actually voting on and evaluating.
That's our, that's our view of what your, the limits on your review is.
We're limited to that extent, yes. Okay, thank you.
I think I understand the limitation. It's not the easiest thing, Randy, but I think I sort of get it, and I want to appreciate all the smart comments from the people who came. I'm reminded again and again how great our town is because the people are just thoughtful. I see three major issues. One of them related again and again to the idea of this definition of public transit, one related to the idea Margaret brought up, this kind of this concept of the character of the neighborhood, is it oversized? And finally, the slope stability, sort of a public safety issue. Okay. And the way I understand it is that we're not supposed to be reviewing Adam's judgment. In other words, his discretion in determining these things are not within our purview. I see your frowny face, Margaret, but I believe that that is the, I believe that the, that the concept is not to review the exercise of Adam's discretion in deciding the truth or non-truth of these things. The things that we're supposed to be reviewing, as I understand it, is whether he has complied with the requirements of the law in, in reading what was required. In other words, did he perform, or did he consider these issues? Is that right?
Yes, and in fact, you can't review his discretion because the duties he performed were ministerial duties, right? He looked at objective criteria and said, yes, it's met, or no, it's not met. And the law, the state law itself then says there may not be discretionary review by the council or the Planning Commission.
Right. So the reason I go through that exercise is because I think, and first of all, Mr. Sharp, that was an excellent presentation, we appreciate it. I'm not sure I fully agree, by the way, with the interpretation of resorting to legislative intent when you can deduce sort of what, to me, would be an alternative interpretation is the clear meaning of the statute itself, within the words of the statute itself, is to find a way around the obstacles related to the approval of an ADU. And so while you could stretch to find a way, that there would be a word within the statute that you might find an alternate definition to, when trying to consider whether that word, how it ought to be interpreted, if within the statute itself, without resorting to legislative intent, you can deduce the meaning by the words within the statute itself, you ought not to go to legislative intent. That's not to say it's not a smart argument, it's just that, I think that, I read that section while we were having a discussion here, and 6582, 65852.2, and you'll see one of the subsections references specifically that the intent of the statute is to provide a way around over regulation of those things which would deter the approval of ADUs. I'm sorry that Ms. Chu has left because I think her concerns about traffic safety are significant. Phyllis, I agree with the concept, the thing of the, and I agree with Phyllis's under, in the Planning Commission, her concept, this definition of what a bus stop is is kind of sketchy. I don't have perfect comfort level with it. No, you can't, sorry, Phyllis. However, I have complete confidence in, and especially when I heard how, how much the depth of Adam's review, what he's considered, the different things that he considered, he consulted, what does Marin Transit do? He considered all these different ways in which to define, how to properly, fairly characterize what is public transit. And I have confidence that he properly interpreted the requirements within the code in that So, Mr. Tocar, I, I again, agree with you, the concept, this, like, what is a bus stop? That's a sketchy, that's a tricky one to do. But just because we, as we sit here today, can deduce for that particular site, a different way to define what a bus stop or public transit is, and say that maybe that one's not, I'm not so sure that a fair reading, taken in a larger context, would exclude that type of stop from what is the definition of a public transit. And in any case, even if I did, it wouldn't be appropriate, because I think our own role here is to decide whether or not the requirements were complied with by our planning director in evaluating the different criteria necessary to apply it rigidly. Am I right?
Largely right, I think.
It's objective, right?
It needs to be objective criteria that he applies, and one of the things that you have to do when applying the legal requirements to the facts before you are to determine what those legal requirements are, and he has done that, and unless the council determines that was legally erroneous, then that's the end of the inquiry on that issue.
Okay. I agree with the ideas of trying to provide for accessible areas for our community, but that, we bring this back then to our initial points here, so that the public transit thing, I do not find any erroneous reading of the requirements by staff. With respect to the character of the neighborhood, I would go with the same thing. With the slope stability, I think that's something our excellent Public Works Department will have a say in, or the public, the building permit will decide some of that. And so, and the parking issue, while it does relate to safety issues, I think is trumped, if that's a word, although I hate, because now it takes on a different meaning in today's society, but this idea of public transit removes, and that's why I asked a question, about whether there is a requirement for parking. If there's, if you're within half a mile of public transit, we can't be looking at those things. We can, however, look at it from a safety standpoint, which means our Public Works people can make that intersection as safe as they can do and not let people park there, because that's, that really scares me a little bit when we do anything that's going to potentially endanger, you know, people trying to make a, right, the steep streets. So anyway, so that's a long-winded way, and I apologize for the length, but this is a harder question, and I wanted to reassure people that we've heard what they said, it's meaningful to us, but there are alternate points of view, and it's my own sense that our staff got it right.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey? Very eloquent.
I do have one other question, please. When I was asking about the size of the lot, there's some concern expressed that this is out of character of the neighborhood, overdevelopment of the neighborhood, and what I'm understanding, if the numbers presented so far are correct, that the actual lot coverage of, you sum the, the lot coverage of the main house and the lot coverage of the ADU, and it's like 15 or 16% lot coverage, is that correct? It's going to be something...
I think it's 20 in the 20s, 25.7.
But the standard, the town standard is 40%. So, so we're, we're well within, or I should say, you are well within the town prevailing standard of coverage of lot and development density.
Yes, yes. And another point on just the, the pattern of development, if I may, I think because you're raising it, you know, I've, I've looked at sort of the intersections of Enterprise and Constitution where they link up with Prince Royal, and actually, the predominant development pattern is that there, where you look at the other corners of where those streets hit, those north-south sort of uphill and downhill streets, generally there are single-family homes on either side of those streets at the corners. This would be actually more of the anomaly, and I can understand that because it's a little bit, because the, the single-family home is a little bit further down the hill, but still, from a pattern of development perspective, it's more common than not to have two houses on either side of, of the narrower street where it hits the Mariterial Street.
Anything else? Any other comments?
That was the only, I think, other questioning of the judgment of the planning director that I picked up.
Okay. Eli?
Yeah, I largely agree with Councilmember Bailey. Well, first, thank you to everybody who, who spoke or wrote to the town, both sides of this issue. You really helped us sort of understand the complexity, the depth of complexity of this issue here, and a number of valid concerns were raised. So I'd like to speak to, I guess, the three main ones that I think were brought up, which were, one, soil stability, which I think Director Wolf confirmed for us numerous times, will be duly addressed later in the planning process. The town of Corder Madera has laws such that no unsafe structure will be built, and I think we're all fully confident that those laws will be adhered to, and public safety will always be the top priority. So that is a settled issue for me. As for architectural character, I believe that the, it sounds to me like with that condition of approval, we have really made sure that this ADU is going to match either the existing primary residence or the remodeled primary residence. So ultimately, that will be fulfilled either way. So again, that seems to be a settled issue to me. Parking is really the one, again, and it seems like everybody's having this issue, where I, I have real difficulty making that finding, just because I, and, and I don't want to cross into, I don't want to let sort of my discretion come in here, because as we've been repeatedly saying, this is not a discretionary action, this is reviewing. Does, does the decision that was made conform with the, with these requirements set out in the ADU ordinance? The ADU ordinance makes reference of public transit but does not define public transit. My, and I don't know whether this is my discretion or whether this is a reasonable interpretation, would be that a bus stop or a, a bus stop that is primarily used as a school bus stop, I would think is not a good-faith interpretation of public transit. stop, I would think is not a good-faith interpretation of public transit. At the same time, I have, I have heard from both Director Wolf and from the town's council that the, the state law here is really intended to set out minimum thresholds with regards to all of these different factors. So in that sense, perhaps, it may be that in this case, with our ADU ordinance standing as it does, there is not grounds to exclude a school bus stop as public transit. I would love to discuss that further with the council and with staff, but I would also like to say that regardless of what we ultimately end up determining here, I would like to see in the future us revise this ordinance, because I do not think it's really fair for us to be considering a school bus stop to be public transit. So I'd love to see that clarified for future reference.
Anything else?
No.
Well said, everyone. Thank you to everyone who spoke, again, and taking the time this evening to do this. I really appreciate it. This is a very difficult and serious issue, and I think all of us have tried to take it very seriously, and I think have done so. Regarding public transit, that was one of the reasons I asked that question specifically, and Adam, I did think you had a very, very good answer, that you had checked it out very carefully. I may have personal issues with the parking and how it's done, but that's not the question, right? The question we're handling is, did this adhere to the law that was passed by the town, and did the zoning administrator properly administer that law and use his discretion to do so? So, and my answer to that is yes, you did. I mean, you clearly have thought about it, done a tremendous amount of work on it. I am also confident that the geotechnical work will be done. It may not be done, but I also know from having built stuff in this town that geotech will be required and will be reviewed carefully, and may be sent back if it is not, until we are confident that whatever gets built is going to be really, really, you know, safe, and the neighbors will not be affected by it. I cannot make a finding that the, that the planning director was legally erroneous, which is what you, the way you'd stated it. However, having said that, I would agree with Eli, I would really like for us to bring this law back, the ADU law back, and review it again. This is the first time we ever had any questions about it. Other units have been approved by it, and, you know, it's worked. It's important for us to build ADUs, right? I mean, it's, it's a way for us to help try to solve the housing crisis in California, Northern California, so I want to make it some, we all want to make it something that's workable, but we also don't want to do something that creates tremendous issues and problems for the neighbors. So I would really like us to bring that back for review sooner rather than later, I guess, so we can take a look at this and try to make it work. Anyway, that's where I am. We still need a motion. Would anybody like to make a motion on Resolution 52 slash two oh one eight?
I'll move that we approve Resolution 52 slash two oh one eight, determining the planning director properly exercised his ministerial duties with respect to the ADU at 159 Prince Royal Drive.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes. Okay, thank you all for coming.
Well-stated, Bob. What well-stated summary? It's good.
I don't remember what I said. But it's great.
You spoke to the folks who came.
Thank you, and we're...
I was going to give these to you after I spoke.
We have to move on to item...
But after we close, we're not...
Six point one point three.
And the roots of 113 on seventeen.
Good luck.
Update regarding special town council strategic planning workshop.
Hey, Rebecca.
We have a report from, I bet Todd Cusamano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, this is a summary of our town council strategic planning session that we held on August 14, 2018. I just want to thank the council. It was one of the most helpful things over the last two years for myself and staff, and I hope it was for the council as well, to really have this discussion. And something that the council discussed that really helped us is you broke down basically priorities into three categories for us. And so, what I'm asking you today is just to review the summary of the staff report, and, and my thoughts are to take any changes or comments that you have for me and staff, and make a one-page white paper, put it on the website, and it's really a living document for staff, the council, future staff members, and council members in the community to understand what our priorities are. And so, again, at the bottom of page one, and page two, we kind of discussed those, we broke them into three categories. Again, category one is fiscal sustainability, infrastructure, maintaining the town's infrastructure, the flood control, our streets and our sanitary district, as well as our town-owned facilities, disaster planning and readiness, as well as our infrastructure. And council also discussed, you know, let's have a plan, you need to have a plan for the environmental impacts of flooding and fire in the future, and, and plan around that. Category two was land use, traffic circulation, and maintenance and beautification of our town were very important to the council. And category three, this, we defined them as, as quality-of-life issues, so some of our ordinances are noise issues, short-term rentals, you can add the ADU ordinance to this, will be one, and then we put it as everything else. And so, just because category three means everything else, everything is important to us, but this is what we took from your input and feedback. And from that, with the help of my outstanding planning director and public works director, Peter and Adam, they walked the council through these categories, and the following two pages really, we categorized those issues within the three categories, you can see them here, and it was really helpful for us. And so, we hope we've kind of encompassed that, that thought and the input that you gave us. If we got it wrong, it'd be helpful to know that, because again, this is what we're going to go off of. Some of this is a 12-month plan, some of this is a lot longer, but this is what we're going to put our resources and time into over the next 12 months and future agendas. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Any?
Thank you, Todd.
I have two, quick ones. One, and maybe this is too detailed for this, if this is too broad scale. Did I miss something about the sewer lateral ordinance?
Yeah, so, the sewer lateral ordinance is done, the sewer lateral policy is coming back to the council. It is one of our priorities, you'll be seeing that coming back to us in the next couple of months.
Okay.
We're going to hold two community workshops...
Great.
And have that discussion, so that is a priority, and will be coming in. It is, it is at the bottom of page two, under infrastructure.
Disaster planning.
Oh, I'm sorry, disaster planning, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Number two.
It says sanitary district 11 projects, I didn't know if that was...
I'm sorry, it's under disaster planning and readiness, infrastructure, number two, it's sanitary district, number two, complete evaluation, yeah, and so, the lateral ordinance policy. And we know that, that's very important, and we have been, before our workshop, staff has been meeting with a number of constituents within the town, both shopping centers, that's a big one, and some of the larger homeowners groups, because they have some uniqueness and some issues as well, and so, we really want to get their feedback before we hold the first community workshop, but that's a priority, and we'll be coming back.
Okay. And I had one more, maybe I didn't read this closely enough. Is the view ordinance on here somewhere as well? Is that a, I'm sorry, but I am, we've been so good about being big picture. Oh, there it is, he just pointed it out to me, got it, thank you. I just want to make sure we're dealing with really pragmatic stuff that takes huge amounts of meeting time, and, you know, the number of appeals we had in the last two years based on, you know, the view ordinance was a lot. And they, they're long, difficult meetings, and if we can clarify that, I think it would help everybody in town. Okay. Any other questions?
That's what I thought, when we look at the, the set kind of priorities, we really feel like every six weeks, we can accomplish a big-ticket land use item, you know, we can attack the, the readiness, disaster preparedness readiness, you know, fiscal opportunities, and so we feel like we can accomplish what is before us over the next 12 to 18 months. We're excited about it.
That would be outstanding.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I, I have to confess that I only read it once, and I recognized things that we did and said that day, and I haven't really had the opportunity to read it again with the thought of, hey, is there something else important that we're not picking up right at the moment? And I'm just wondering, what is the deadline? You, you said at the beginning that you would like to put this up, is there a deadline? Can you give us a couple of days to dig in one last time?
Sure, no, absolutely, and just so you know, this is a living document, just because this is what we talked about, if this, if anything becomes a big council topic and issue, we'll, we'll deal with it. And I think what's helpful out of all this, we can categorize it now, though, right? Is it a short-term, long-term issue, is it in category one, two, or three? That kind of sets, if it's a three, then yes, we want to accomplish it over the next year, but it doesn't have to be next month, right? And that, that's what's helpful, but absolutely, you have time.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, if I may. Under infrastructure, category one, deliver capital improvement projects, environmental four projects, what types of projects are those? Got environmental on page two of the staff report, under, under infrastructure, category one, and traffic circulation improvements, which is underlined, then there's item one, deliver capital improvement projects, and environmental is a bullet point?
Yeah. Councilmember Beckman, that's a good question. So, this is in reference to our capital improvement program that was adopted back in May, June, and we have a category of capital improvements called environmental, and just some example of those. I think these are ones that you'd be a navigator, the zero-waste program, beverage cycling, container recycling, the LED conversion program, so those are all just coming out of our CIP.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from council? And we're going to open up to the public for comments or questions? Hearing none? Everybody left. I will bring it back. So, you just went direction, this is not something we vote on, right?
Nothing to vote on, just, just to make sure, it was just a summary, and any feedback that you have tonight.
Any feedback or comments for staff on this from the council? Okay, great, thank you very much, appreciate it, nice job. Okay, so now we become the sanitary district, right? We don't need to do anything official for that, right? No, I didn't think so. And we're going to hear a staff report on consideration and possible action to approve plans and specs to bid the Pfeiffer pump station modifications.
President Ravazio, your name, your title just came up from mayor to president, congratulations.
Geez.
The Pfeiffer pump station project is before you, we're seeking approval of the plans and specs, and mostly the authorization to bid. This is a project that basically will, will help us get the Pfeiffer pump station up to where it needs to be, and mostly in terms of a modernization and a pumping capacity standpoint. For those of you who, who are familiar, the, the Pfeiffer pump station is located off of Tamil Vista, behind Joanne Fabrics, you know, the pump station is located right there, and its primary job is to deliver sanitary effluent into the Paradise Force Main. Right now, the Pfeiffer pump station is having difficulty achieving its primary task, especially in wet weather events, and the main reason for that is that the pumps are old, and the capacity, since, since the Paradise pump station, which is our workhorse of the whole sanitary district, it carries the most, has the most horsepower, has the most lines, has the most force, it, when it pushes from San, where San Clemente and Paradise come together near that intersection, towards the village and to the north, and eventually across Cordermadera Creek to connect to the CMSA main line, it does so with a lot of force. And so if you think about, you know, say, anywhere from a three-to-four-foot diameter pipe that has all kinds of force going through it, if you have a connecting pipe, if you don't have enough force and high-weather flow to get that in, what happens is, in this case, the Pfeiffer pump station starts to back up. And so, because of the upgrades we've done to Paradise, and because of the age of the Pfeiffer infrastructure, we're, we're seeking this improvement, and I just wanted to break it down for you in those terms, and I'm happy to take any questions you have on the matter.
Okay, so we'll open with questions first from the council, and you sound remarkably knowledgeable.
I know.
The system for just having started a couple of months ago.
I know. Wow, that was...
Is a kind of check valve relevant there?
Check valves are in place, there's, there's, modernization is needed with the equipment. Our actual, the rest of our check valve problem are not here, we'll be coming back to you with some of those, but that's definitely a, a strategy that we use to keep backflow. This isn't necessarily a backflow issue, it's more about actual capacity of the pump station itself to deliver into the Force Main.
Any questions?
The funding source is the reserves that are held in the sanitary district?
Yeah, so, we have around a $9 million balance in our sanitary district, and we have a list of capital expenditures over the next five years, really, that exceed that by almost twofold. We're going to continue to bring in revenue into the sanitary district. I do think that at some point in the next couple of years, we may be looking at a fee structure issue to keep pace, but for the current status, we have a fund balance in sanitary district to, to cover all of our capital improvements that the council has approved for this year and the next five.
Any other questions?
I do have one question for District Manager Brown. How do these numbers match up with our capital improvement? Like, is this what we put in our, or is it a little more, a little less?
Yeah, so, for the Trinity, the Trinidad two pump station, it's in the CIP for $950,000 approved by council, so we're a hundred or below, and for the, this, yeah, the Sausalito pump station is estimated in this report at 250, and our CIP is 300,000.
Okay, great.
So we're, we're below both estimates at this point.
Great.
The other thing that District Manager Brown will add is that we're not on that item, we're on the Pfeiffer pump station item, they're two separate staff reports. I know Town Manager Cusamano is eager, but in any case...
No, that was because I was looking at the wrong one.
The Pfeiffer pump station...
I'm sorry?
...estimate and authorization, actually, the CIP is 600,000, and the current engineer's estimate for the Pfeiffer pump station is 650, so we're right in that range.
Sorry about that. Great. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to open this up for public comment? Nobody ever comments on sanitary district items. Thank you, Karen.
Except for the numbers, lady.
And I'm speaking as the Chair of the Sales Tax Oversight Committee, and I think Mr. Kuhnhardt covered my concern, is that these are resources that are not coming from sales tax at all, they're coming from reserves that are coming from a completely different source.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, President.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
I didn't identify myself.
That's okay, we all know you care. I'll bring it back to the council for a possible motion and vote.
You know, can I make one comment before we do that? All right, it's really for the benefit of Peter or Todd or somebody. I've had an observation over the last year or so that our engineers' estimates are low, sometimes way low, and I don't really blame him or her, whoever we hired to do that, because I know that there were difficulties with the cost and the availability of materials and whatnot, but I take it you've, it doesn't surprise you I make this comment, you may have remembered when I observed this in the past, and I just want somebody to be cautious that, you know, if it happens, it happens, but I would rather not have somebody come back and say that we're $300,000 low on a $600,000 bid, which is what has happened, which is what, wouldn't surprise me, but I, I would love to avoid that, that's all.
I got to get this, got to get this right. Board member, not council member, Board Member Bailey, the thing I'll say about that is the last three bids that we've had have been under the engineer's estimate, that, even with the cost escalation. So, so far, my track record, since I started a number of months ago, is, is good. I don't particularly prepare the estimates, but we do work with the engineering staff, if we do it in-house, or the consultant staff, to revise those with a critical eye, given the current market conditions, given recent bids, do, like, if you're in real estate, we do comps for the work. I do think that, having said all that, it is a complicated endeavor, it is an estimate, and, and things do change that are out of our control, but, but having taken note of you saying this earlier, and, and having trust and faith in the current staff, I think we're doing a decent job of estimating the projects that we need. And the only other thing is that these... And the only other thing is that these approvals that you're going to look at for both this item and the next item include what I would call steep contingencies. So we're looking at building a buffer in our contingency program, as well as our construction management, in order to cover anticipated cost range 20%, not 50%.
Okay. I'm really pleased that you're doing this. As you know, I can't imagine anything more important, so I'm happy to make the motion for approval of the plans and specifications and authorization to bid for the Pfeiffer pump station modifications, project number 17-203.
Second. Second.
Board Member Bailey?
Yes.
Board Member Beckman?
Yes.
Board Member Kuhnhardt?
Yes.
Vice President Andrews?
President Ravazio?
Yes. Okay, then we are moving on to the next item, which is approval of plans and specs, authorization to bid Trinidad II pump station and Sausalito pump station improvement project.
Thank you, President Ravazio. I would be remiss if I didn't give some compliments to Fernanda Stefanic, who prepared both the prior staff report as well as this one. She has been a new addition recently over the last few months, a little bit newer than me even. And we, as far as I know, for a number of years, haven't had a dedicated sanitary district two staff. She doesn't spend 100, 100% of her time on SD2 issues, but she certainly is our in-house expert. And so she's been working with our consultants on this. And a quick summary of the Sausalito and Trinidad improvement. So the oldest pump station that is in original condition is Trinidad. That is amazing that it's lasted this long. You know, 50 to 60 years old is how long it's been cranking away. It has become a problem station in the sense that we do spend a lot of overtime hours on it, because especially in wet weather flows, it doesn't perform very well. So the whole station will be remodeled. The renovations are designed to reduce sanitary overflows, reduce staff overtime, and improve safety of the workers that have to go out there in extreme conditions. Trinidad is also, happens to be, when we track this stuff, our highest overtime and highest call-out rate. So if you look, it's like a problem child in the system. It requires a lot of our time and attention. At the same time, Sausalito only needs the electronic panel that helps us run the pump station. And so because Trinidad is going to be a wholesale remodel, so to speak, and Sausalito is due for just the electronics and the panel, we're throwing that in. I think the two projects combined are in that, that one, 1.1 million dollar range on the engineer's estimate. The bulk of that is at Trinidad. I think it's only around $180,000, so a small portion of the total cost to get Sausalito online as well with Motor Control Center. And so I think that's it in terms of my summary, and I'm happy to take any of your questions.
Any questions? I had one, and I know, so this is Paradise K, and I know we had some problems there last year with lines that were sagging, and I think we fixed that, and I'm sure this is part of the problem. It has been a hu, is this going to largely correct the Paradise K issue, which has been a huge drain for us the past couple of years, or?
Yeah, so the, the main work in Paradise K, as you mentioned, has already been done, as, as has a repavement project. So this particular work, which will realign how Trinidad II connects to the main line and prevent some of those gravity and settlement issues, we're going to have to cut into a moratorium street, so it's going to be a little more expensive because of the timing of the project, but it won't affect, this project doesn't affect any of the main line throughout that system. It's simply the pump station, and then the way the pump station connects to the main line are what's going to be improved along with the generator.
Okay, so this and the seoralateral ordinance will hopefully help start correcting some of the issues we've experienced in Paradise K.
We hope so.
Any other questions? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none. I will move it back to the council for a vote. Possible motion?
Move the approval of the plans and specifications and authorization to bid the Trinidad Pump Station Two and Sausalito Pump Station Improvement Project, 17-204.
Second.
Board Member Bailey?
Yes.
Board Member Beckman?
Yes.
Board Member Kuhnhardt?
Yes.
Vice President Andrews?
President Ravazio?
Yes. Moving on to town manager and council reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a few quick updates. It was in our recent newsletter, and residents in our high-risk fire areas are also being alerted from PG&E, but PG&E is starting some work. As you know, there are some new state vegetation and fire safety standards requiring minimum clearance of four feet around power lines, and as, 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 as much as 12 feet of clearance. So what they're doing now is they're going out into our neighborhoods, basically our, our Chapman Park hillside and Christmas Tree Hill. They'll be communicating with neighbors and assessing the area, and then that work will start shortly thereafter. So that is going on now. We're also keeping our community updated through our newsletters and social media. And Councilmember Bailey, a couple of meetings ago, asked us to come back to council with the fire chief and talk about some of the efforts we're making in fire prevention. So what we're going to do is, we're going to set up, probably in the next month, a second meeting in October, have our fire marshal in PG&E come in and do a presentation, talk about some of the work that they're doing. Again, their big focus is four to 12 feet of clearance of vegetation around the power lines, and they're also instituting and installing temperature meters, weather meters, on the hillsides and the high-risk areas, because now they have a 24/7 operations center, and so they can monitor weather and heat on the hillsides. And so if something happens, they can be alerted immediately, and they're tied into our public safety in our county.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Of course.
So I love that you're doing that. I'm really worried, this is a terrible time for all those people, because there's all these fires, and PG&E is struggling with a million different things, is it not? I don't want to sap up their time.
They've asked us, yeah, so they've coordinated, so they have staff, that's, that's aside from that, that work on this, and so that are going and educating communities, and so they, they've asked.
I'm grateful to you for it, but I don't, you know...
Yeah, so it works within their, their timeframe. So I think I'm excited, because there's some good efforts coming, and I think it's time that we educate ourselves and the community of the good work that's being done.
Thank you.
That, that is coming back to you. Our planning team's been busy. They held two public workshops last week and on the weekend.
I'm sorry, but on the last, on the last item, are you planning on inviting in the NRG groups?
Oh, yeah, so, yeah. So we've been talking to the leadership, and what we're going to do, aside from that, is we're going to hold a disaster summit with all of our stakeholders. So CERT, NRGs, everyone that handles disaster preparedness within Corder Madara and Larksburg, we're going to hold a two-session summit, and we're going to talk about all the good work we're doing in the town, all the good work the NRGs are doing in CERT, and also with PG&E, kind of putting it all together.
Do you have a date?
How it works together.
You don't have a date for that, too?
No, it's a, it's kind of, you know, over the next 90 days.
Cool.
Yeah. The planning team held two public workshops on a potential cannabis ordinance. There's also a survey available to the community. Again, we've been notifying the community of that survey on a potential town regulations on a cannabis ordinance, and so we're alerting the community and trying to get as much input as possible before that comes back to you. The coastal cleanup occurred last Saturday. It was led by Dr. Bundy, again, and the Corder Madara Community Foundation, with the help of Mill Valley Refuge and our Public Works team, and so they cleaned up our marsh area. So I really want to thank Dr. Bundy and the team for that. Really successful. Dr. Bundy gave us some feedback as well, that this was one, one of the best years for cleanup. There's been a lot of homeless encampments in prior years, as we all know about, and this year, there are no big encampments. And so, so that was positive, and I think that's the work of what we heard today and our present, our presenters, and as well as the Centurion Police Authority. They've been getting out there and, and really trying to help people and, and get them the resources they need. As you know, the, in my unprofessional opinion, Peter could probably speak better to this, but I went out and looked at the Town Park Shade Structure project, and it, and it looks to me that it's approaching completion. It looks like it's about 75, 80% complete, but I want to thank Peter and the team for getting that project done. We've been talking about it for eight months, and I think we're a few days, weeks away from it being completed. So thanks to Peter and the team. And behind that, again, you approved it tonight. We're excited about the basketball court project, so that's exciting. And Skunk Hollow Park, that's, that's next. And so we've identified that. There's some safety issues. The neighborhood has been talking about some improvements for the last couple of years. And so the Public Works team and Park and Rec are meeting with the neighbors to kind of identify what they want. That'll go before the commission, and then ultimately to the council sometime in the coming months. So I'm excited to get that going as well. And, and as I stated, nothing is, we haven't identified dates, but it's a priority for staff to do so, the lateral ordinance policy workshop. So we're going to hold a couple of those as quickly as possible and get that back to council, so you can provide feedback for staff. And that's all I have. Thank you. Actually, I do have one more. Also, the mayor and staff are meeting with the post office on our noise and parking issues on Thursday at 2:30, as well as members from Congressman Huffman's office.
Wow. About the noise at our post office. Man.
We're making some progress. I brought in the mayor.
I guess I'm going to go now. Okay.
Oh, okay. I'll set that for, I'll set it for the agenda.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Councilmember reports?
One super brief report. I attended the age-friendly Corder Madara celebration for the Non-Agerians better. It was a fantastic event, very successful. Vice Mayor Andrews was there and presented these certificates to the honorees. I think everybody had a really great time, so...
How many do we have in town roughly? Or how many were there?
We just touched on it earlier. What was it, like 22?
Yeah. 202.
Jesus. That's kind of awesome.
Yeah, so the oldest resident there was 109.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, of course.
Yeah, so it was really good.
And she's driving. I'm sorry. 109.
We're having your 110th birthday here.
Coming up. Coming up.
It's incredible, isn't it?
Isn't it amazing?
What's really incredible is that during Lion's Share Weekend, I was helping her out changing some, you know, batteries in, in the smoke detectors, and she asked about her, her problem with her sewing machine. And I said, well, when did you get that? It looked like a real classic. And I was expecting her to say, oh, sometime in the, whatever. She said, March 29th, 1956.
Oh, my God.
She knew exactly because when it, anyway.
Okay.
I got a couple of things to, to comment.
Please, go ahead.
Comment on. Even though the Transportation Authority of Marin had zero meetings in August and hasn't had one yet, it will have one next week, I have an, an agenda packet that's like this. So I went in and did my introductory session and put in my Form 700, collected their background materials for me as a new commissioner. The, this, we endorsed as a council, the half-cent, continuation of the half-cent sales tax at a level for the funding of TAM. This is the public information thing, and I would just pass that around so that people can get, and I had a couple in the back of the room over there. Thank you to Town Clerk for putting the Time to Lead on Climate event in our own newsletter. We had over 700 people there. Over 700 people there this Saturday. It was absolutely fantastic. It was great. Last week, I attended a few of the collateral events of the Governor's Climate Summit, particularly the Diesel Free by 33, and I happened to see Director Peter Brown there. Diesel Free by 33 is an effort to stimulate innovations that will allow us to eliminate our dirtiest form of transportation fuel by 33. I, as an individual, signed on to that. They were requesting members of the broad, broader community to sign on, particularly those with some elected title. I'm wondering whether we can go back and get our mayor to sign on behalf of the, of the council. This would be found at the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and if you had anything more to say on that, open, open to hear that.
Yeah, I attended the Diesel Free by, by 33 as well. 15 years is a near, near term. It's really cashed in the, in the form of climate, climate change and climate change mitigation. There were some really innovative discussions, the shipping industry, flight, there's a lot of diesel in, in a lot of the main transportation areas, and so I thought it was very informative, and I think we'll keep the council posted on, on anything we can do.
Yeah. This Thursday, there will be a climate summit meeting in, in Novato, and I was curious whether anybody else here is going. Oh, good. Good. Okay. You are as well? Cool.
I'll be there.
Oh, good. Fantastic.
Great.
If we want a carpool, I'd be happy to do that.
Absolutely.
All right. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thanks. And I get...
I actually have something, too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But go ahead.
I was just going to say, I get a ton of requests to sign stuff for the town, most of which I don't. Excuse me, I delete. But I'm happy to sign stuff, but I don't want to sign it unless we're all behind it. So if you want me to sign something, if you can just have us, we can put it on the consent calendar. I don't think I have the authority to sign for the town and put the town's authority behind it.
Right, right.
So that's one of the reasons why I haven't signed any of that stuff.
I understand.
If you want it signed, put it through the consent calendar, and if everyone's into it, then we'll do it.
Okay. That's why I brought it up.
Thanks.
I just want to, I actually have four reports, but I'll just mention that I attended, and then if anybody wants more information, they can ask me. On August 21st, we haven't met for a while, is that right? On behalf of Marin Clean Energy, that I'm our town's representative, we traveled down to a gigantic wind farm called the Voyager Wind Two Project in central California, and we also visited a truly gigantic solar farm that we have contracts with. Fascinating, and it's amazing what today's technology do and we're using to power our county. There's a, by the way, there's a day-long retreat next week for Marin Clean Energy. On August 27th, I attended the MCCMC Marin County Council of Mayor's Councilmembers Legislative Committee, where we discussed all the bills that are currently pending and what will be on the upcoming ballot. I have a list, if anybody's interested, of everything that's going to be upcoming ballot, although I suspect you can get that in a variety of other places. On September 6th, I attended the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, where I sat for a Bob for our town, and we discussed the upcoming November ballot measure for the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority tax renewal. Does not look like there's any opposition to any of the measures in any of the districts they've been put in, so that's good. We talked a little bit about ambulance billing services that they struggle with a little bit. Apparently, it's an administrative nightmare. And then finally, on September 12th, I attended the Marin Local Agency Formation Commission day-long retreat, and we discussed all about approval of when two public entities want to combine, for example, the consolidation of our local fire departments, what the local agency formation commission's role in that is. And if anybody would like more information on any of those four agencies, I would be all too happy to share it with you. That is my report.
Thank you. Couple of things. One, I just wanted to let everybody know that Sloan and I have temporarily switched roles as the representative of RVPA and the alternate. He's going to be going to meetings, I'm going to be the alternate for a while. Do we need to do anything further with that, or is that considered? Up? We have to, okay.
People at RVPA are good with it.
Consider that the announcement? Okay. And second, I did attend a hearing Saturday morning on the cannabis ordinance, which was here, which was interesting. And that's it for me.
Ma'am, and Amanda, I attended both of the hearings on cannabis, and I thought the staff did a good job. I was impressed with the depth and variety of commentary from members of the public. There's quite a bit of variety, and I look forward to hearing what the Planning Commission has to say, but I want to tell you that I'm not sure the Planning Commission is prepared to handle the range of topics that are covered in that subject matter. That is, the medical range of topics that are covered in that.
Was, was the meeting rancorous, David, or people were cool?
Oh, there was, there was a small amount of high-temperature talk back and forth, and a couple of people who don't know how to handle public meetings, you know. A not-too-distant neighbor of mine, who's supposedly lived on the hill for 50 years, I've never met him before, but he was there, and he just couldn't contain himself.
The people tended to be, the comments tended to be pro-cannabis or anti?
I would say that on the first hearing, there was quite a balance, and it was, to me, surprising. There were medical professionals who spoke both pro and con.
Yeah.
And, and at least one medical professional who individually spoke both pro and con. And on the next, on the Saturday, which was a little bit less attended, there were a little bit, there was a little bit more con, I would say, probably. Bob, maybe have a...
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't see the first one, but yeah, I would agree with you on the second one.
Mayor Ravazio, may I make a comment, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to add that the Community Media Center of Marin videoed both workshops, and I will send an email to you all when they are up on our website, and I can index a jump to the public comment period if you're interested in that.
And the survey's still on the website, right? Okay.
Thank you both for going with that.
At least one of the medical psychiatric professionals has written a letter to us, and it's in, in our package, and I encouraged a couple of different people to, to write their thoughts down.
That's good.
Okay. Moving on, we have to review the draft of upcoming agenda items for October 2nd. Any comments, changes?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, just really quickly, a couple of highlights on the presentations. I just want to highlight the second presentation. There's going to be an update from Golden Gate Bridge District regarding their four-acre tidal marsh restoration project. Staff has been working with them, and they are prepared to come back and discuss their restoration project out on the marsh.
Is that the Audubon property?
No.
That used to be a dump? No?
No.
Different?
It's different.
Okay.
But, yeah. And then the District Manager is going to bring back the grand jury report regarding the consolidation of sanitary districts. And then on business items, business item number two, we're going to move that to the October 16th meeting. That's the consideration of amendment of the Central Mid Fire Authority Joint Powers Agreement. We're just finalizing that JPA, but again, we have a green light from Calpers and Larkspur and Corder Madara. At least staff and attorneys are on the same page. We'll see if the councils are on the 16th and 17th. But I, just from my perspective, and all the discussions and feedback I've had from the council over the last two years on this, we hit all of our points. So this is a very good agreement for us.
We haven't had any committee meetings?
No, no. And then one other item, I just, a question for council. Are you interested in agendizing, canceling the November 1st meeting?
No, no, no.
Oh, is that right?
Moving, moving.
Oh, moving.
The one that's on election night.
Oh.
It's Monday.
Do you want to bring back a motion to move? Yeah, the first...
We don't have a council election?
We don't have a council election, per se, but we do, if, if council requests it, we do have a practice of moving the first Tuesday, November meeting to Monday, when it conflicts with election night activities, if you think that's something that you want to participate in. But we would need to put that on the October 16th agenda, so if you are interested in moving that meeting from Tuesday to Monday, I would need to have an item.
I personally am very, very interested in following what happens on the 6th, on election night.
Why don't we, why don't we move it to Monday?
Or is the alternative to cancel it?
No, we just move it to Monday.
The, the alternative would to be...
Don't get too excited there.
I mean, that, that is...
Don't get your hopes up.
That is within your purview, but the other option would be to keep it on Tuesday.
Sure. No, whatever they want. I'm with them.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put an item on the agenda.
It'll be on the next agenda.
Yes.
And then also, while we're in November, do we want to discuss, do we want to bring something to them for Thanksgiving week? We have a council meeting on the 20th.
What day is Thanksgiving?
Thanksgiving is the 22nd.
Two days before Thanksgiving.
And, and we're, from a staff perspective, we're okay canceling that, so I'm happy to bring something to you.
Okay, just do it.
It'll be a show.
A conversation about November.
Sounds like it may be a staff request.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, go ahead.
About the agenda, sure, go ahead.
Yeah. Business item four, discussion regarding tobacco retailing. Is that going to touch partly or mostly on vaping?
That was my exact question, too.
Yes, and also how it's advertised at some of the local businesses.
Okay, cool.
So, yeah.
Some other jurisdictions have taken action against basically child attractant flavoring of vaping.
Exactly.
Yes.
Well-stated. That's, you said it better than I. Yes, that's exactly it. And so we're looking at bringing something new similar to what the county did, County of Marin.
Okay.
Good.
Anything else? Questions? Then we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good work, sir.
Everybody, that was good.